Good morning. This is a special meeting of the Cameron County Commissioners Court, Tuesday, the 8th day of December 2009. It is now 8:00 a.m. I just ask that we stand and recognize just a moment of silence. Thank you. I'd like to ask Ken Jones to lead us in the two pledges, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Ken. We have two items to discuss in executive session. I've been advised that Item A, there will be no discussion because the parties are not here. So let me hear a motion to go ahead and table that item.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Gadsden, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
By Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Gadsden. To discuss, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. To discuss one item, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning potential breach of the U.S. Marshals contract to house federal inmates pursuant to Code Section 551.0712. Do I hear a motion to come out of executive session by Commissioner Gadsden?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wood. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item B, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning potential breach of the U.S. Marshals contract. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge report of counsel and proceed on the terms and conditions that are discussed in the executive session?
So moved.
By Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Benardevas. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Public comments. I have one public comment by Jerry Hartzog regarding drainage. Where's Jerry?
Hey, there's another one here. One more.
Thank you, Commissioners Court, for having me. I'm Jerry Hartzog, City Commissioner of Rojondo. Concerning for B, I guess I would like to express my concerns that the city of Rojondo's concerns are also addressed. If we're going to do a drainage project, which we're completely in favor of, I think it will impact our city if we have a major hurricane. And I would just like the city of Rojondo to also be included in some of the discussions and some of our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
The real Javier Mendez?
(laughing).
Thank you.
You want me to pass him this way?
Yeah, just pass him out, Javier.
Just for the record, my name's Javier Mendez. I'm the city official of the city of Primera. In the little letter I hand out, I just wanted to express our concerns, like our fellow citizens from Rojondo, that we, as I stated in the letter, we full-heartedly support any regional project that will enhance the ability of the city of Primera to get its water off of the streets and out of our homes. The only problem that we have is that I don't believe any of these projects are going to enhance that ability unless we can get some funds to be able to tie into it. City of Primera was severely impacted by Dolly. We want to thank the Commissioner, and he did help us out recently in round one. And we'd like for you to consider our recommendation there to possibly allocate some funds to not only so that we can tie into the system. It would be useless to have a tremendously improved drainage dish near Primera which we cannot tie in. We've talked with the Drainage District, the Development Council, and some of the irrigation districts, and I believe we're on the same page there. They also believe that there should be some relocation to allow those of cities that have problems with their drainage system and that those are afraid of deflection during Dolly to tie into any improvements. Again, I want to thank you for your past help, and we hope that you continue to support and don't forget the small cities in Cameron County. Thank you very much.
Would anybody else like to make public comment that did not have the option to sign up?
Don't forget pressing 3.
It is still part of Cameron County.
Normal.
Mayor, today, and we'll get to that in a minute, but this is a, it's not an action item. And Ken, I certainly do hope that you, that the group, you're not on yet, Ken. You're not on yet. Not on yet.
(laughing).
Calm down. But the group does factor in, I mean, in order for it to be a truly regional drainage project that every community is taking into consideration and has some input or significant input into this whole process, okay? Item A, presentation of Texas Farm Bureau Insurance Companies Texan of the Week to Thor Lason of Ocean Trust.
Judge, I'd like to ask you to present the framed certificate that we have for Thor. I was called some months back by the particular group, which was Farm Bureau Insurance Companies. They wanted a suggestion as to who they thought in South Texas could be named Texan of the Week. We mulled it over in our office for a significant amount of time, and we tried to find an individual that was somewhat non-political, somewhat, you know, someone that had worked in the area and had made a huge difference for Cameron County. And Thor's name came up. We discussed it. We suggested it. We talked to the producers of this particular program of the week, Texan of the Week program, and came to the conclusion that Thor Lawson, you know, who is not a native Texan, he is the first non-native Texan to be named Texan of the Week. After what we told the producers of the program, what he's done for our area, they were very much in agreement that he was much deserving of this. They did a weekly radio program in which, you know, he was broadcast statewide as the Texan of the Week. Thor has bought a pair of boots, you know?
He's got a hat.
He is looking for property. He's working on a hat.
He's working on a hat.
He's looking for property in the area and will be relocating. But Thor has been the spark plug that we needed on our Bahia Grande restoration project. He has been to every meeting, and he comes from out of town. He's up in Virginia area. He has spearheaded our group. He has helped us through the funding process. He has navigated us through the U.S. government process. He has become a partner with U.S. Fish and Wildlife. What he's helped us do with the Bahia Grande project has allowed it to become a true partnership for probably somewhere up to more than 80 different agencies working on one project together in agreement as to what we'd like it to become. So we nominated him. They accepted it. They did the weekly talk show. We have waited for him to come down so that we could do the presentation in front of Commissioners Court. He is a reason why this court has received national awards with that project. You know, he's been the spark plug. I would like to ask him to come up and receive the certificate, but also tell us a little bit about the latest. Thor, if you'd come to the podium, and the judge will, you know, present you with the plaque. But please tell us, you know, a brief statement.
The plaque.
Whatever you like.
You're having difficulty walking with those boots.
(laughing).
It's like a woman with high heels, you know?
(laughing).
You know, although, and I agree, Commissioner Gadsden, I don't think you could have found a better recipient than a non-native Texan that can't wear boots yet. But I will tell you, a lot of folks, and Thor, you were instrumental in the Bahia Grande project along with Carl Gaiman and Joe Vega and all the people that brought, the other Javier Mendez, everybody that brought that project to fruition. A lot of us were there at the ribbon cutting when they did this, not too long ago. But it's a great project, and Thor, I want to thank you for your leadership and because you were one of the key, if not the key member to that. So with that, all yours.
Thank you very much, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners. And I really appreciate the recognition. It's more than probably, I think I deserve, because it really is a community project. There have been so many people working on restoring Bahia Grande, and that was a dust control committee issue. And we all had different initiatives going on. And we formed one group, and that was when it really started to take off. Just as a brief update, the RCEAT money on its way. They still have to go through some paperwork, but the funding is there to get the channel a little larger. You know, things are going to move slowly and probably won't see that until in the summer. Right now, we're the only group that has any money, and so we're doing, spending it on the permitting to try to get all that set up, working with BND and the other, and Cameron County and the other parties to get all the paperwork, pre-planning work. So once MMS releases the CEAAT money, we can move forward. A lot of things still need to happen with regard to Bahia Grande. There's a lot of public interest in that site, as you know, if you ever drive up 48. In one area in particular, there's a pull-off that TechDOT had set up. There's an observation point. That is eroding terribly. I know there's a building coming down, and if there's rip rap, we'd like rip rap, you know, want to make a plea for that, a public plea that people know of rip rap. We have a couple of sites that can take it immediately, not only on that pull-off on 48, but we're also working with Refuge to protect a onslaught corridor up at Laguna Atascosa. So we're looking for about 300, 400 truckloads of rip rap, and I'm going to, excuse me for taking the opportunity to promote another need.
(laughing).
We're recipients, and please get in touch with me. A lot of areas in the valley that are opportunities to continue the enhancement of this region. And honestly, this is, while we do work in many parts of the United States, this is the only area where we have a chapter, really because of the interest of the community, to step forward and actually improve the lives of people and the environment. But we're working on dust control off of Long Island, the little village of Long Island, that property. And there are just a lot of opportunities to move forward together on plant revegetation for the beach, for the city, for Laguna Atascosa. So I'm hoping that I can continue to work down here in partnership with everybody and add, maybe get a second pair of boots, a proper hat, and continue my, what's been a great relationship. So thank you very much, you all. I appreciate the honor.
Thank you.
Full wish to you all. I think we all appreciate everything that was done, and I wanted to mention to you, I served on a federal board, and our last report, we do a report annually to the President and Congress, and one of the issues of the last report that was issued last March, part of it does have to do with the Bahia Grande restoration. And I've got copies of those in my office, and I'll be glad to provide you with the copies so you can see where it's going there.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Thor. Consent items 5A through double H. Any item, any member of the court wishes to take out and discuss separately. I just have item D, just for clarification.
Maybe if we could pull out 5A for clarification also?
Which one? A?
A.
Judge, need a table of items C, E, and G?
C, E, and G?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else? Do I hear a motion to approve all items with the exceptions of A, C, D, E, and G?
So moved.
By Commissioner Gadsden, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Tamayo, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Do I hear a motion to table item C, E, and G?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benardevas and by Commissioner Gadsden. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item A, consideration authorization to increase budget 150-61-90, slot number 2, by 3,000 in budget 150-16-90, slot number 3, by 2,000 using budget 150-622.
I ask that this be filled out so we can have a better understanding of it. I think I understand, or I know I understand the reasoning for it, but perhaps some of the public might need to have a better understanding of it.
Judge, can I say something to this item? You know, when we were preparing the budget, you asked us to cut all our budgets to the bone, and we did that. Some of our landowners don't even have enough money to finish out the year. But one of the things that this Commissioners Court said, there was not going to be no pay raises, no pay raises, you know? I wouldn't mind people getting pay raises. But if you're going to do this for this department, I hope that you consider other departments also, because it's kind of unfair. I don't know who this department is. I don't know. But if you're going to do this for this particular department, I think all the departments should be considered. You know, if it was in budget, let us work with our budget and increase some of those people that are deserving of a pay increase. You know, I've been coming to this Commissioners Court for the last 32 years, you know, and complaining that some of our department heads are not at the same level as other departments. And if you're going to do this, it's only fair that you allow some of the offices, elected or appointed, to make a presentation and get ours approved also. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody, anybody else in the court have a question about Item A?
Pete, you want to explain it a little?
Well, just, this is just similar to an item that we had last week at the Commissioners Court meeting. There's an issue that's been ongoing for a number of years since we moved into Levi's Building. It's an issue that we've had with the distribution of mail. I think on a daily basis, we get incoming correspondence, either FedEx, DHL, or UPS. And we've had two individuals that have been performing the duties of the mail distribution, taking on that responsibility for a number of years now and have never been compensated. And we didn't address the issue during the last two budget years, and it came up during the Commissioners Court meeting last week. And so by doing this, we will address that issue with those two employees. We looked at different options of setting up a mailroom there at the Levi's Building, but at the end, this is what's been recommended by staff. And again, these two employees, probably two and a half years now that we've been in that facility, have been doing and assumed these responsibilities without the proper compensation.
Pete, I know you have looked at the idea of setting up a mailroom in that building. Cost-wise, what would setting up a mailroom run?
I think I got with Robert on that. I think we looked at about $10,000 to be able to run a mailroom at that facility. And that's on a part-time basis, not a full-time basis. Keep in mind, when we get packets delivered through FedEx, UPS, or DHL, those really don't have a set timeframe as to when they come in. They come in throughout the day. So we would have to have somebody full-time at that facility. And there is a large volume of correspondence that we get. We've got big departments in that building, you know, mainly the Health Department and the Department of Transportation. I believe probably the Health Department is the one that produces the most bulk of mail and incoming packages from FedEx, DHS, DHL, or UPS.
Any other questions?
Pete, let me try and clarify that. When this first was brought up, you recommended that, who handled this? I'm trying to, I'm trying to see the process that was followed.
We've got a mailroom here at Dancy Building that distributes, we've got a mailroom here at Dancy Building that distributes the mail for the county. But when we opened up the Levi's Building, that's probably our largest annex building that we have in the county. And we've got an annex building in Portisville and Harlingen, but the operation is very small. The annex building in San Bernardino is very large, two large departments, Department of Transportation and Health Department. So initially, we looked at maybe the mailroom here at Dancy, assuming those responsibilities on a part-time basis, but that didn't work out, because we need to have somebody there on a full-time basis doing the distribution and accepting the packages that come in on a daily basis.
So you're going to pull someone from some department to just do this?
No, there's two employees that are there. They're housed in that department. They're already doing this. They've been doing this for the last two and a half years.
And who does their job while they're doing that?
No, they do it concurrent.
They're doing both. And the two employees are my two employees in the office. And after having an agenda item last week where we compensated someone because we promised that they're going to be compensated for having done something for the last two years that they hadn't been compensated for, I took the opportunity to say, well, if we're going to be compensating employees like that, do one of two things. Put it in the agenda to somewhat compensate, and not necessarily retroactively for two years, but just from here on forward, to do the work that they're already doing and have been doing, or, you know, we are not going to be, you know...
So this is saying that each month, I mean, you're increasing their salary, or what is it, or is it a...
This is annual.
Yeah, it's just an annual adjustment to the salary.
Huh?
An annual adjustment to the salary.
For 2,000 for each of them? You're adding, sorry, I need a better explanation.
One position has been increased by 3,000 and the other one by 2,000.
And that's because of the volume of work that each one does in relation to this. And the alternative is real simple. If somebody else wants to do it somewhere else in that building, take it out of the office. You know, it doesn't need to be occurring in my office.
Because your office is up front, and that's why...
That's where they all, everything ends up there, you know? I don't think that neither of the two girls that I have in my office want to take on the responsibility for signing in for every package that comes in, making sure, emailing every department saying, "There's a package waiting for you," making follow-up calls when it says perishable goods, vaccines, et cetera, or whatever, making sure that they sign in for registered mail that, you know, goes through the different departments. And they've been doing that for two and a half years now. You know, I don't want, I mean, if they're not going to be compensated for that responsibility, I don't want them to do it anymore.
But why is, why is one 3,000 and the other...
Because equally divided, that's about how they share the work that is done. The girl that is there most of the time is the one that does it about 60 to 70% of the time, the other one 30 to 40% of the time.
So they, both of them aren't doing it at the same time?
No.
That's what you're telling me?
No.
That one of them does it in the morning, one in the afternoon?
It depends on who's busy doing what at that particular time of the day.
Any other commentary?
I'd like to address the issue that our kind of clerk brought up, and I think it is appropriate, Mr. Rivera, that if there's someone in your office, or some other elected official's office, or director's office, that is doing something that is extraordinary to what their normal work is, that they be compensated for it. And certainly, you know, if it's in your budget or their budget, we need to be looking at it and seeing what we can do for them. I agree with you, Joe. I think we need to look at those things.
I was contacted by several employees that had, I imagine, read the agenda, and that was their concern. They felt that, why should some people, and I have no problem with your clerks having, getting an increase, or the one from last week, but I think we're sending out mixed signals, because here, we had everybody cut their budget, and definitely no employee's got a pay raise, and then all of a sudden, now we're starting to do this. So, I mean, I don't know.
And the only reason I brought it up is because last week, we gave someone at the Social Services, Brownie Park, a raise for doing some work that they had been promised. I had brought this to the attention of this court from day one. In this budget process, I brought it to the attention of the court. They wanted to budget $10,000 to build a mailroom, plus have someone from Brownsville drive on a daily basis to spend one, two hours there every day and come back. You know, so if the court wishes to spend half of someone's salary and spend $10,000 building something, my office doesn't necessarily want this responsibility, okay?
I have, I have a recommendation. I think, how many departments do you have there? How many offices? In other words, who else could come up and say, "Okay, I'll do this"? And I don't know if you asked the other departments, and I know it's a lot of work.
They were asked in the beginning numerous times, all of them.
Yeah, we would probably need to add a position to deal with this. We could, we would need to add a position to deal with this. I think that we could handle it with the existing staff.
No, my question was, and evidently Commissioner Gadsden says, you approached them, or who approached them?
Nobody wants to do it, you know? Everybody says that they're maxed out in their job responsibilities.
No, no, but I mean with this added incentive.
Oh, I didn't approach them with an added incentive.
No.
Well, this, well, this is what I'm saying. I think, in all fairness, and probably nobody will come up to the plate, because this isn't, you know, the work is probably more than what this is compensating them for. But since we're talking about paying, what, 3,000 more and 2,000 more for this job, perhaps you can check with the other departments, just to be fair. And then, and then I don't have a problem with that. Because obviously, when these other departments were approached, this incentive wasn't fair. Do you see what I'm saying?
So Pete, who processes the mail for the whole annex there?
The same two individuals.
The two girls.
So now, everybody brings their mail to Marty and your other secretary, and they have to put it together, and then...
You know, the post office drops off those baskets, you know, that are full of mail every time.
It's a lot of work. There's no question about it.
UPS drops off, like, one, sometimes one package, sometimes 20 packages.
Pete, do you understand what I'm saying?
Sometimes, you know, I mean...
It's time-consuming, and obviously, and it's work. It's time-consuming, and it's work. But all I'm saying is, I don't want other departments saying, "Well, we would have done it if we knew we were going to get 3,000 more or 2,000 more." That's my only point.
Well, I know you talked to the Health Department, to the Department of Transportation.
Yeah, and those are the two larger departments that could handle it.
You told them that they could get 3,000 more.
No, we didn't talk salary, but just talked about...
That is my whole point. My whole point...
But we talked about, yeah, they, I mean, the workload would be too much for them to handle, and, you know...
How's that?
The workload would be too much for them to handle. I mean, they couldn't keep their existing, you know, job responsibilities and add the mailroom responsibilities, you know, not...
Well, then it's an injustice for these two people then, because, I mean, why, I mean, they have a lot of work too.
Yeah, they've been doing it two and a half years already, you know, and I've brought it to this court's attention and, you know...
The problem that we have with transportation and the Health Department is that we have a lot of foot traffic. And, you know, it's hard to predict how much foot traffic you're going to have every day. And so, you know, we might end up in a situation to where three, four days out of the week, there's a lot of traffic, and they're going to be behind with the distribution of the mail, you know, because obviously, the priority is going to be, is going to be responding to the constituents that are there, you know, to get building permits, or have a question on a plat, on a subdivision, or need an address. And so those, those walk-ins will take the priority over, you know, over the mail distribution. The Health Department is the same thing. They have a lot of walk-ins. And so that is the highest priority that we have.
Now, and I brought this up the last time, Commissioner, why are they not delivering to the proper department?
The address that we have, we have one address for the entire building.
I mean, not, not the Commissioner's office. I'm talking about, about the postal service, or...
They deliver to one location in a building.
Only one address.
We asked them the same thing.
Well, maybe, maybe what we can do is, you're labeled A, B, C, or, and how are the departments labeled?
No, it's the same thing. Same thing happens here. All the mail comes in here to one location, and then it's distributed.
I just don't know if a mailman is going to go to every office distributing.
No, they're not. No, that was requested, and they, you know, they denied that.
They deliver to an address, or it has a...
To one location.
Yeah.
It's only FedEx and all those other ones that will, you know, they come into this building, and they, something for the auditor, we send them to the auditor, and vice versa. building, and they, something for the auditor, we send them to the auditor, and vice versa. But the mail probably will not...
No, they deliver like in those plastic containers, you know?
And they were asked to, to deliver to the different departments, and they said no.
They deliver to one location. Initially, we were hoping, when we opened that building, that at the very front, where the main entrance is, there was a little cubby area.
Right.
That that would be utilized by the Health Department, and that would be where things would be received and things of that sort. But Ms. Alinas did not have a budget to have a person there to handle that responsibility. And that little area's been there, open, unused, you know, I mean, it's, you know, there's nobody there. Nobody wants to do this.
Well, I, I believe in, in paying people for extra work that they're doing, but I can tell you one thing, the, the line is going to form to the right with people coming and saying, I've been given additional responsibilities, you know, that, that's, that's what concerns me, and, and, you know, where do you stop? And I, I thought, I thought that, that this had been solved, and evidently it hadn't.
I think as, as, as the lines start lining up across the, you know, we take each one a case-by-case basis, and I believe that if the, if the department head or elected official can, can justify it to, to the court, and they have, this is coming from Roden Bridge, if that's correct, and not General Fund, the...
Well, but it's still money.
Yeah, it is, and I understand that. But what I'm saying is that if, if everyone comes and can justify it, I mean, the, what happened last week, or ten days ago with that other individual, it wasn't because they were doing extra work, a commitment was made to that individual to move to that location, as I understood it. And the commitment was never fulfilled after two years, or whatever it is. And all I just brought it to the forefront, you know, if a commitment, and I think Javier said yes, I, I did make that commitment to that individual, so we're just fulfilling a commitment. This is not a commitment. This is, this is because extra work is being done. You know, if, if, if Mr. Rivera comes, you know what, I, I made a commitment to this person to do this three years ago, we haven't done it, well, then we're going to have to evaluate that, you know, and, and see if it happens. But what happened ten days ago was because Parks had made a commitment to this individual to move to Brownie Park, and that commitment had not been fulfilled. And that's why, as I understand it, that's why that person was moved to that location under that, and that's why. This is a, this is a different thing, it's not a commitment of any sorts. If Joe comes in and says, Joe, did you make this commitment to this person two years ago? You know, then we're going to have to look at that, well, yeah, I did. Okay, then we need to look at that. But I, I agree, I mean, I think we're going to have to take every case individual, see what impact it's going to have on the budget. In this case, it just doesn't make any sense to me to go out and spend whatever number, you came up with the number of ten thousand, that's going to require at a minimum a part-time employee with potential benefits, it's going to cost us more money to do that than, than giving whatever these numbers are to these two individuals.
No, there's no question about that, and that's not what I'm referring to, and, and this, I mean, they are doing that work, and it's a lot of work. It's not, it's not, my questioning is not because they're not doing the work and they don't deserve this. My, my point is that, here we go again, you know, how, there's no better way to solve this, it seems like.
I think Commissioner Tomayo, you brought up the issue that perhaps there are other people that might be willing to do it, if there's an incentive involved in it. Mr. Rivera, I think you have personnel in that building and...
If, if they don't want to do it in your department, I'd be more than glad to, if you're going to give five thousand dollars away, I'd be more than glad to take that responsibility to them.
Well, I don't think it's being given away. I think it's being paid for work that is being done, okay?
That's what I mean, Commissioner.
Yeah, I mean...
If you want to pay for something.
Well, no, you said, give him money away. No one is giving money away, you know?
Well, see, this was my, this was my whole point. If we did this...
If you're going to give the pay raises, okay, to do extra work, our department can take it over. I don't want to take it.
Hey, take it, I don't have, I don't care who...
I think Yvette has a, has a comment.
I just wanted to let the court know that we need to make sure that we have a strong operation for our mailroom, because one delivery of vaccine, once Cameron County receives it, we're financially responsible for the loss of that vaccine, should someone leave it by their desk or what have you. It could easily be ten thousand, fifteen thousand, twenty thousand. So we do need to make sure that we do have a strong mailroom operation.
Well, whatever we do, I think we're still...
Have you had issues, Yvette, with your department?
No, no, Commissioner, but, and, and I just wanted to let y'all know that we, we need to have a, a good system, a good mailroom system there, because Cameron County could be, you know, they are financially responsible for the vaccines.
Well, I think that, that these two people need to be compensated, if they've been doing the work, if we're going to start doing this. But my only concern, and you saw Joe come up here, you know, is, are they going to say, well, the rest of us were not given an opportunity? But whatever we do, if, if we're going to do this, if we're going to vote for this to happen, the people that have been doing this need to be compensated.
I guess we could bid it out to the lowest bidder of the department that's willing to handle it.
Pardon?
We could bid it out to the lowest bidder, lowest department willing to handle it.
Send out, send out bids, Pete.
Yeah. Well, this is, this is staff's recommendation, again, we look at the different options.
You don't only have to have the people to do it, but you've got to have the infrastructure in place to do it. You got to have to, somewhat of a secure location. How do you, how do you send the message to the mail people, everybody else? Yeah, well, go down, you know, as it is, when you walk into that, and I think it's a nice building, but you feel like, like a mouse looking for a piece of cheese in that building, you know, because...
It's convenient.
It's so many mazes around, I mean, you know, so you got to have that, that infrastructure in place. You've got a large work area that's there. I don't know what, what the space facility is with, that Mr. Rivera was talking about. I don't know if he's got office available, I think he's got counters, and I don't know. But if this is your recommendation, did you look at other, at other options as you were working through this?
Yeah, I got Robert and we looked at other options, like I said, but at the end, this is staff's recommendation to the court.
Okay.
Now, this doesn't mean we'd start now, or we could go back?
No, I'm not...
It starts prospectively.
You know, this is not retroactive, this is, I mean, it would be nice, because they've been doing it, but that would be, I mean, I brought it to the court's attention in the past, trying to either get it out of there, or find a way to better do it. I mean, if somebody can do it cheaper than that, hey, more power to them.
Well, I think there's a lot of issues we have to take into consideration. Number one, the accessibility, the location, and I agree with you, Judge, on that. And the other is that there have been no problems so far.
Correct.
In my, especially with the Health Department. Well, all the departments are important, but it's a delicate situation.
They're the biggest recipients of perishable, especially materials and mail.
There's a huge influx of mail in that building.
Judge, I make a motion that we approve item A.
Move by Commissioner Tomayo, do I have a second?
Second.
Like Commissioner Garcia, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, item carries.
B, four B?
Four B?
Five D.
No, five B. Five, no, we tabled, oh, I, no, what I pulled out was...
D?
Four B.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about four Ken. I'm sorry.
That's okay, gentlemen.
Oh, yeah, put it to the very end, so many people, you know, stick around. Okay, I don't, I apologize. But, you know, let me, let me know that I'm here, let me just go ahead and four D, just a clarification, Robert, that was on the consideration, authorization to approve the proposed budget for the renovation of the Cameron County Rio Hondo Building. My question was, there was a shortage, and, and tell me where you're going to find that shortage of thirty-some odd or fifteen thousand?
I did place a revised budget in front of y'all. I did speak with Javier, a budget officer, and the possibility of using lapped salaries was discussed.
Okay, well, the possibility of using was discussed, or is there enough money in lapped salaries to actually do that?
There is enough, excuse me, there is enough money in lapped salaries to do this.
Okay. Do I hear motion to approve?
So move.
By Commissioner Garcia, same by Commissioner Tomayo?
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. I'm sorry, Ken.
Judge, can you interrupt a minute? Robert, this past week, when it was raining, I got a call from the Adult Probation Office, and they were concerned because you have roofing problems there, that we have leaks. And I talked to Mafie, and Mafie told me that you all had fixed the front side and the backside, but this middle section is the one that needs major repair. And what can be done to address this problem?
Actually, the entire, the entire roof was, was pretty bad, and, and after Hurricane Dolly, we were able to address part of the roof due to the amount of funding that was actually reimbursed to us. I'll sit down with, with the auditor's office and see if we can address, you know, a funding source, or allocate a funding source for the repair. And that's something that we've been looking, you know, into, and unfortunately, with these rains that we do, that we do get, we do experience, you know...
Will you get back to me on that, please?
Oh, well, Commissioner, yes, ma'am.
Four B, discussion and presentation regarding method of distribution on round two of HUD Hurricane Dolly funding for the Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council region. Okay, now.
Good morning to all. Thanks for adding this item on your agenda today, to give, give us an opportunity to share this information with, with the Commissioners Court, and try to address any questions that y'all may have. I have, I'm fortunate to have resource backup this morning with the presentation. I want to introduce our Development Council Homeland Security and Disaster Recovery Director Manuel Cruz. We have Irrigation and Drainage District Managers here this morning, Sonia Lambert, Troy Allen, and Alan Moore. And I also want to recognize that Mary, City of Philly is here as, as well today. During the...
Well, we have another mayor.
Did I miss somebody on my back?
We have the mayor from Combs here also.
Sylvia, hi. And you met the Commissioner of Rio Hondo earlier, under public comment, period. Good to see you, Mayor. The, I'm happy to say that during, during the executive session, sorry y'all had to go into executive session, but we tried to make productive time. We had some productive sidebar discussions with Combs, Primeta, and Rio Hondo with the Drainage District Managers on, on addressing a concern that they had, that was mentioned during public comment. And when we start discussing the projects in a little bit, I think Sonia's going to visit with the Commissioners Court on, I, I think there's a solution there to, to address some of those immediate needs within the budget confines that we have. So we'll, we'll get to that in a little bit, but that was, worked out extremely well. It always makes a difference when you have, you know, the folks that need to be in one place at one time and, and have a constructive discussion, so it went extremely well. What we have passed out to for y'all this morning is, I have a copy of the slides I'm going to go over, which is, you know, in color. And we have a draft copy of the method of distribution for the second round of HUD Disaster Recovery Dollars, which both the presentation and the method of distribution, plus we have a color eight and a half by eleven map showing the projects, drainage projects within all three counties. All of that is currently posted on the Development Council's website, which is, for those in the audience and maybe listening, would be www.lrgvdc.org. And with that, Judge and Commissioners, I will get us started. First, kind of a little, a momentary brief summary of what's had transpired to date, round one, which was over a year ago. When, when that allocation was finally determined, the three-county region received fifty-five million. For those in the audience and maybe listening that may not know, the disaster recovery funding from Housing and Urban Development, that was allocated to the state of Texas. Round one was 1.3 billion, with a B, round two, 1.7 billion. The state of Texas chose the state agency, Texas Department of Rural Affairs, a year ago it was ORCA, Office of Rural Community Affairs, but now it's TDRA, to be the primary administering entity for Texas for those funds. The housing portion of those funds was charged with the, to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, TDAHCA. The state had chose, and TDRA, round one and round two, given the responsibility for the distribution of those funds, once they were allocated, they were allocated by Council of Government Region, of which, why I am here, and why we have been going through, going through the process of round one and round two. The fifty-five million for round one, we fared much better. In round two, as you can see, 184 million, 920,000, 160 dollars. You add those together, it's nearly 240 million for the three-county region. Now, a challenge that we're faced with, well, this is the challenge that we, we survived through on, on the first round with the allocation by county. I will pass that one fairly as quick as I can and talk about round two, which is what we have at hand. Out of the round two total funds that I mentioned, there are 184 million, 920,000, 160 dollars, was divided by the state in the action plan to HUD this way. There was just shy of 105 million for housing, a set aside for affordable rental housing of 15 million, 108,600. Now, you see that asterisk by that number, there's also an asterisk, if you look to the extreme right of that chart, for the healthcare facilities, that 1.4 million also has an asterisk. What that means is essentially, those are competitive allocations that'll be determined directly by the state, Texas Department of Rural, TDRA, Texas Department of Rural Affairs. The, although that 15 million for affordable rental housing, 1.4 million for public housing is allocated to this region, it is allocated amongst our three counties. So it will be a competitive process among eligible applicants for those dollars among our three counties.
Within the counties.
Within our three counties. But it's extremely important, in any way that we can help, get the word out in Cameron County, as well as the region, it's extremely important about those two competitive pots of dollars because this, it's a situation that if those funds are not spent in our three counties, it will go somewhere else. And the reason for that is, especially for that affordable rental housing component, that, that is towards meeting the state's 10% criteria by HUD, or minimum requirement by HUD, for the amount that was received by the state of Texas. So that 15 million is part of our 10% contribution, of the state's 10% contribution, so that's still a state obligation. So if it's not utilized here, it's going to be utilized somewhere else up in the Upper Gulf Coast. So we need to try every way possible to get the word out, because I know there's enough need to utilize those dollars, obviously, here, especially, you know, I would think in coastal counties, Cameron and Willsey, so we're going to be working hard on getting, getting the word out for that.
What does healthcare facilities mean?
That would be, Commissioner, eligible non-housing projects, similar to round one, if it would be a clinic, a public health clinic, or a hospital, could prepare an application for, there's still generator needs. There may still be some public health clinics that have some structural damage from the storm that has not been repaired. Those kinds of, those kinds of activities.
So if we have a, if we have a building that housed the Health Department, but we had to move out and can't utilize it because of existing problems, we could theoretically submit an application?
That would be potentially, we need, we'd need to run the traps and make sure that that would be eligible, and we can have a direct link with the state staff to assist in that. So if that may be a remote possibility, we'll do whatever we can to help get an answer for sure for that, because as, you know, the earlier an application can be prepared and submitted, the earlier that we can get some funds into the region and zero out those line items, you know, to make sure that it's not lost to, to any of our three counties. So be happy to get with, with whoever...
If we have a budget shortfall in fixing the Rio Hondo Health Clinic, we have a building inseminator that can't be utilized because it's not inhabitable as it is.
Yeah, who would y'all like for me to get with, for the county staff? Would that be Pete, or?
Robert.
Robert. Probably Robert. Robert Lopez.
With Robert? Okay, okay, we'll do a follow-up with that, Commissioner, thank you. So that leaves us with two categories that the Development Council has, has the, the responsibility to distribute amongst our three counties. The housing and the non-housing, which you can see the, see the total there. The state changed their criteria on what they're allowing for method of distribution on round two. As y'all know, in round one, the, it was divided, you know, 50% essentially by population, the counties received a 50% allocation, so we had a, a regional method of distribution, and we had a county method of distribution. That's not allowed this time. The state is only allowing one regional method of distribution amongst all three counties. So we are faced with, with, at the Development Council, coming up one that is as fair and equitable as possible, meeting not, you know, the county-wide needs, including all municipalities regardless of size, and doing it, when I get to the timeline, oh, well, in an extremely almost impossible abbreviated timeline by Tuesday of next week. Whenever we began the process with the state, we anticipated the Governor's Office approval of... of giving the COGS at least till the end of February to get this done, because, you know, it's not easy. One thing that I'm constantly cognizant of, in a way, is to make sure that all the elected officials have enough information and enough time to digest it, look at it, and make sure there's any modifications that needs to be done to most effectively use those dollars that's available, for whatever topic or however amount we have. Unfortunately, I received a notification on, what's today, the eighth? Seven days ago, on December the first, that, well, no, it looks like the state's not sure that HUD's gonna give them, the Governor's Office, a time extension that they anticipated. So in order to meet, we're all, it's not just this COG, you know, Houston, Galveston, Southeast COGS that are faced with this dilemma, the state has to get their method of distribution into HUD by Christmas Day, which, that needs to be backed up, because when we have to complete it, send it into the state so they can review it and send, you know, and make any necessary revisions before it goes into HUD, so our deadline was imposed was the 17th, which is next week, which is that last item on that particular chart. With those changes, TDRA is also encouraging of what, a direction of which we have embraced at the Development Council at this point in time, in encouraging making direct allocations to specific regional projects this time versus the methodology that was used in round one. This is the timeline that we're faced with, and, you know, my personal apology to everyone for it to be so compressed, but that's the hand we were dealt, so we had to find the most adequate way to accomplish this in a positive venue with the short time that we had. We, although we're only required to have two public meetings through this process, we're gonna have four. Stay with this compressed timeline, and before we knew it, you know, thank goodness we did this, we had two initial public meetings, one on November 19th, one on the 24th, before we knew of this compressed issue, to let the public know that we're beginning the process, what the requirements were of the process, and receive public comments on how the public would like, what things they would like for us to consider in a method of distribution this time. Since that time, as I mentioned, we were notified about the situation that we've had, so we've got a disaster recovery committee meeting tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM at our COG location in Wesaco, which is our big committee, about 46 or 48 folks, that hopefully what I will be showing to y'all today is what is on our website and what we'll be presenting to that big group in the morning, to hopefully get blessing on before I have our first public meeting at 3:00 tomorrow afternoon at that same location. And we have a second public meeting scheduled in Cameron County, in Harlingen, TSTC campus, trying to get this, you know, to facilitate as much as we can between Willsey and Cameron, and that is Friday evening at 5:30. Following that, our staff's gonna assimilate all of the public comments that we can from those two meetings and have them available at our COG Board of Directors meeting, which is scheduled for the following Tuesday, on the 15th, at 2:00 PM at our office in Wesco, of which anticipating a consensus then and any modifications, the staff will have to do whatever it takes to complete everything so we can send it up the next day, on the 16th, up to Austin, so they can have it at least a day before our required deadline. In looking at the housing and non-housing component, as y'all know, the numbers were terrible, available on actual damage numbers, the number of folks that were affected with housing damage and dollar value and the location of housing. When we came across the issue of 104 million for housing, in our quest to find some additional information to help us along the way, to guide us on what to do with the method of distribution, we sent out that survey form that was in the previous slide, and this is what we got back. I think it's still not complete, and I think, and it wasn't complete to the point of being able to determine, you know, how much of the need is for owner-occupied housing, how much for rental housing, because there's a lot of need out there for single duplex or triplex rental units that haven't reached the chart anywhere. What about public housing? The housing authorities? You know, those kinds of entities to meet the folks' need, and we just didn't have the numbers. The average from what we did on the survey was about 10,000 per unit, but, you know, that's not what we wanted either, because, you know, even at that case, that 70 million, but I'm not sure, Cameron County may be faced with the housing allocation for region one, I mean, round one, similar to Adalgue County, some of the units there require 30,000 maybe or something, you know, some quite extensive damage. So, you know, there is a challenge on how we're gonna deal with that 104 million. My recommendation, that's in our method of distribution on our website, to be considered tomorrow in our board meeting, would be that the Development Council be allocated that 104 million to administer on a regional basis. I had hoped, at the time that we thought we had till February to get this thing done, to seek technical assistance from a professional services that the state has hired, HMTB, in terms of doing a local survey amongst all three counties specifically for housing, to see if we can determine some of those answers in terms of, out of that 104 million, where should that maybe possibly go? Not only within the region, but what types of housing? We lost that opportunity with this abbreviated timeline, so now my staff proposal to consider is that the Development Council go out for professional services for entities that involve local firms as well within our three counties, that have experience in doing this all the way back to Hurricane Rita, along the Gulf Coast, to make that a part of the process, and these folks would be charged with actually getting at the grassroots level to identify the folks that are truly still in need, that would be eligible, solicit the applications, process them, take care of environmental, get their construction done, and pretty much a turnkey package, of which would be, as we go along in that process, we need to be guided by ultimately our Board of Directors. So on the housing MOD, that's what we're looking at at this point in time. The comments on the first two, on the non-housing component, on the first two public meetings we had early November, drainage came up, as we know, you know, as, to be considered as a priority venue, and there's two key criteria still as in round one for all the non-housing allocation of funds, and that's failure to function during the storm, that's gotta be proven, and the folks receiving benefit for the dollars invested have to be at least equal to or exceed 50% lower moderate income. That's two key criteria that, you know, if either one of those is not met, the project will be deemed ineligible. So taking that, I approached our, one of the advisory committees that have been working really hard within the region, which is made up of the Drainage District Managers of all three counties, as well as a couple of municipalities, and posed the question of if we had a method of distribution that attacked regional projects, looking at 63, what was that, 63 and a half million, give or take, this could be the last opportunity that we'd have on a regional basis to have that amount of dollars available to really attack some key components that created much of the flooding that we had during Hurricane Dolly that could truly have an impact once the dollars are spent. With that in mind, what you have on my slide there is the list of projects between all three counties that have come to mind. Now, I'm fixing to yield the podium, if I may, Judge, to Sonia Lambert, to give y'all a briefing, a little bit more specificity in the projects within Cameron County. One, I know I probably will be asked a question, so let me go ahead and answer it in advance, of those projects, what is the breakout per county? You know, what does that look like? In looking at the projects that are currently listed, if you add all of those, Cameron County would be about 29 and a half million. Adalgue County would be just shy of 25 and a half million, and Willsey County just shy of 8 and a half million. And that would equal that 63.4 million that's available currently in the non-housing. Now, I might say that, if you look on that list, there's a couple zeros down there, too. Part of our method of distribution is, and in our role is to ensure and recommend to the COG Board beforehand, we need to have enough safety nets in this process, so regardless of what happens, none of that 104 million and none of the 63 and a half million, as well as those other two comparative categories, leaves this region. One way to do that is to include in our method of distribution that, let's just say at this point, if those projects are ultimately approved on how to address the drainage, it's two things. One, should there be, let's say, within Cameron County, okay, should there be any project that's listed there for funding, the dollars not be spent. It could be the efficient operation from our Drainage District Managers, you know, there's cost underruns, so that leaves money on the table. Or there could be some component of a project, for whatever reason that we don't know to us at this point in time, that the state may disallow. So that would leave money on the table. On the method of distribution, what we're saying is, should that happen within, let's say, Cameron County, then that money should stay in Cameron County and would go down to the next available project that's listed there that is shy of funding, which in this case, you can see is 11 and 12. And if there, it could be a possibility, I don't know that there would, but let's look at the housing numbers, if there's not enough identified need for the 104 million of housing, we're gonna include in that, or our recommendation would be include in that MOD, that that unallocated and committed housing number go back over to non-housing, you know, to get the next priority list drainage project on this list, so that we have a lot of cross current, I guess if you will, or safety nets, so that the money can stay where it needs to be, which is here in the Rio Grande Valley. With that...
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner.
Before, you know, I'm looking at the two category funds for the drainage project, the need to meet the failure to function and the 50% LMI requirement.
Yes, sir.
When I look at those projects on that chart, all of them are above the 50%, that means that they would qualify?
Yes. They should meet that LMI, because if you notice on that and on our map, well, we've got the, yeah, that extreme right-hand column with the actual percentage range from 51 to like 84%.
So as long as it's over 50, it's okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so all of them qualify?
And really, I think the LMI numbers should be higher than that, but we had to go back and use 2000, you know, the state's making us use the census numbers by census trend. So the yellow portion on the maps that you see, that you have before you, are the area of impact that we included in determining that lower moderate income number. Now, with these projects, we had a similar meeting, Adalgue County Commissioners' Court had a workshop. Adalgue County, you know, is an urban county, they have an urban county program, which includes all the communities with the exception of McAllen, Mission, Ford, and Inburg, which are entitlement communities. Those folks met, and with the projects in Adalgue County, there was some concern up in the Delta Communities, similar to the concern with Combs and I think maybe, you know, Santa Rosa and Primeta. And through that process, again, a constructive process, there's gonna be some modifications within the dollar amount confines that I just gave you for Adalgue County to do another lateral connection, I think, up in the Delta Communities, which is, would be a matter of going back and refining the potential construction numbers for those projects in Adalgue County to make it work, and I think it will. I'm hopeful that sometime today I'll have the answer to that, that I can present at our committee meeting tomorrow, that some of y'all may, and I encourage, you know, the county to participate in. And I mention that because when Sonia goes over the projects here in Cameron County, something similar could possibly be done to take care of the Combs and Primeta situation as well, in terms of looking back at those numbers, you know, seeing if there was any trimming that could be done that wouldn't compromise those projects that are actually listed, and take care of the needs of the smaller communities, and that's what it's supposed to be about.
So even, we have communities that are rural communities outside of municipalities that should be looked at also, and I hope that Sonia would have.
Correct.
Because there's failures to function in other places besides those communities.
Oh, well, absolutely. And I just want to compliment the Drainage and Irrigation District Managers Group for working together and coming up with this list. It's an excellent example of everybody working together and coming up with something that hopefully will work, and still being able to address, like that sidebar meeting we had this morning, while y'all were in executive session, to do, even with this compressed timeframe, be able to do some tweaking to, again, effectively use those dollars to help the most folks, so that's our goal.
The MOD is not gonna change. I mean, it's pretty well set by the state.
In terms of the requirements we have to meet that's set by the state?
Right.
Now, it's critical on these projects, and if we're able to work out something for, you know, the smaller communities as well as the other projects that Sonia's gonna define, because in our method of distribution, we will actually have a listing of specific projects, those dollars will be awarded to the county for, say, in a local agreement with ABC Drainage District or local government, for the project that's identifying the MOD for that amount of money for that impact area. So it will be very specific in that regard.
And the MOD was set by your organization?
Ultimately, it will be, at our meeting next Tuesday. And no pressure, Commissioner, there's no pressure.
No pressure, but, you know, it kind of takes away some of the local control.
Well, it's, still, the basis of our board representation, though, is local governments, you know, two-thirds, so, two-thirds of our board is local governments, and we have all-size categories in our bylaws represented there in an effort to, even at regional approaches like this, that we do have that, you know, all levels of government representation in our process. Regardless of the end result, you know, that representation is there, and that's why I was kind of getting ahead of myself coming to the podium earlier when the judge mentioned that, because even in this compressed timeframe, I think I've met myself coming and going only twice today already, so we're trying to put like six weeks into two weeks and making, from our staff efforts, a true and honest effort to talk to as many elected officials, as many communities we can within that timeline, in hopes that there is consensus even before our meeting next week, and something that can be positively addressed, and, you know, to minimize any conflict throughout the process, especially with what we're faced with with the timeframe. So that's kind of our goal and hope, Commissioner.
Ken, I understand that, of course, Adalgue County is quite a bit different from Cameron County in that Cameron County doesn't have one drainage district.
Correct.
It covers the entire county like Adalgue County does. We also have lots of areas in Cameron County that's not covered by a drainage district. And when Hurricane Dolly came in, it kind of skirted some of the areas to where we don't really know what the impact would have been had it been more generally spread out the way it was, like in Commissioner Tamayo and Commissioner Garza's precinct, much heavier impact than in precinct two, and probably precinct one also. Adalgue County, a couple years ago, voted to sell bonds totaling about $100 million to take care of their drainage issues. I don't know whether it was all their drainage issues or a portion of them, but there was a pretty large bond issue that the voters of Adalgue County passed. And then a couple years ago, some of that money was spent toward building a wall to supposedly help retain some of the water in the riverbanks and within the levee system, and to prevent the illegals from crossing from Mexico, and as you know, I oppose the wall in whatever form, fashion, or manner it is, I think it's ridiculous. The projects that Adalgue County are gonna be using, and I think they spent somewhere, I'm not sure, 40 million?
It's close to 40 million, I think, approximately. Yes, Commissioner.
Is some of this money going in to do some of the projects that they had planned to do with some of that 40 million dollars? And I guess what I'm saying is, are we backdoor paying for the wall, a portion of it?
I would say not. The county, as I understand, and not being involved in that process, but... The county, as I understand, and not being involved in that process, but is still seeking reimbursement from the State Department, IBWC, for that investment. But even though the projects in Hidalgo County that are before you hear are still consistent with the county drainage plan, as the Cameron and Willsey County projects are as well, but when the bond issue was passed, there was no way to anticipate or whatever a storm that we had. These dollars specifically would not, I don't think they would be substituting for that bond issue, because these dollars have to specifically address, you know, existing failures, repairs, and damage as a result of the storm, which is not anticipated with the bond issue. The bond issue was primarily, as I understand it, for implementation of the longer-range county drainage plan, which would be new improvements, you know, expansions over and above the existing situation that this is going to repair. But both, but there's still parallel tracks in the sense that, you know, these projects in all three counties need to be consistent with what the county's, you know, planning to do. So that something isn't repaired, that's going to be abandoned, you know, somewhere down the road, or that kind of thing, so.
Well, I guess my thought was that if Hidalgo County had had the opportunity to spend 100 million timelines and all this on their drainage program in Hidalgo County, perhaps they wouldn't have had the failures that they saw during Hurricane Dolly, and this money wouldn't need to have gone into that area.
Interesting thought, but I'm not sure. But we still have, there will still be system damage, though, you know, to an extent, but would that minimize some of the flooding if they were able to get a jump start, potentially? But, you know, again, I don't have any details on that one to share, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Judge, with that, I'll yield the podium, if I may, to Ms. Lambert, and it's all yours.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll try to explain a little bit of what the committee has attempted to do. Want to point out, first of all, in your listing that's up there on the screen, the ones that are in Cameron County, the projects that are in Cameron County are number three, number five, and number eight, and those are the ones that we were addressing this morning. Number three, and you have a copy of this map, the drain or the highlighted area furthest to the west, the first one in Cameron County, which is in this section here, is the Tan, is the, excuse me, the Teo Cano project. Now, I do want to mention that within the committee, we did make a list of projects and then prioritize them. I do want to mention that we did prioritize Teo Cano as being the highest priority to us because of the extent of the damages and the length of time that this area was underwater. I believe, and Commissioner Tamayo probably know a little bit more than I do about this, and Steve Brer, I think it was like three or four months before that water was completely drained out there, unlike the other areas that are going to be addressed, so I-
It affected such an enormous area, that's the thing. It was not just, you know, centrally located, the damage extended so far into other areas.
Yes, ma'am. And the second drain on the right side, that is the Tan Lane Drain. And first of all, I want to mention, that first drain, it's not shown on the map itself, but it will be draining to the south, to the Arroyo, so it's not going to go in the floodway. The second drain shown in there will go into the floodway. In item number three above there, it shows Teo Cano Tan Lane and Southwest Drain. That's one, two, and the third one being the very small portion on the bottom, showing us a small drain, and it's not a small drain. That one will be draining to the south as well. All of these projects were combined into one, primarily to meet the LMI that Ken was just talking about, the low to moderate income. We wanted to make sure that we met the 50% and/or exceeded the 50% to make sure that we were eligible. Now, since these three drains do belong to three different entities, there will have to be-
Can we turn the lights on, so we can see them?
Yeah, I've got Andy looking.
There will have to be inter-local agreements between different entities, like the city of Harlingen, the Drainage District Five in Harlingen, and the city of La Feria will have to go into inter-local agreements, because they are three different projects in three different jurisdictions. Then I'll move over to, move on to project number five, Drain A Whitening. This area drains all of South San Benito, Los Indios, part of Harlingen, and all of the city of San Benito. And that is this drain, it's not very clear on here, but it's this drain that is shown right here. This entails whitening of that drain, it is the main drain of San Benito and Los Indios. Everything drains to the northeast, starting from Los Indios, going north. All of, the city of San Benito drains from the west to the east into this drain, and then is, goes into the Arroyo ultimately at the very end. The project consists of draining, or, excuse me, whitening the entire drain. And then I'll move on to project number eight, East Line Drain and Relief, yes, sir.
You have the number five-
Yes, sir.
-there. That part of the drain also drains south?
No, sir. All of that drain currently goes to the north.
Okay. So where is it going to start draining south?
We have just completed a project in Los Indios that is draining south. The intent of that project that was just completed was to leave more room, of course, and drain in this particular drain. The portion that would be draining south is the other portion, which is labeled as number 11. Now, that didn't meet the ranking, not, excuse me, that didn't meet the prioritization only because of the amount of money, of course, $9 million. That is a project that the Drainage District has been working on and trying to annex primarily. That one will drain to the south as well, too.
So five will drain south from where?
No, sir. All of drains, all of five drains to the north.
All of it, completely?
All of it.
Okay.
And then I'll move on to project number eight, East Line Drain and Relief. That is at approximately 5.2 or 5.3 million. That will take care of a lot of the Las Yescas, Rio Hondo area. That drain is, met the failure to function, it is not in adequate capacity to currently drain all of the existing area. It is something that the Drainage District, Drainage District Three, has been working on, and I wanted to comment also a little bit on the two comments that you received prior to this, one of them being from the city of Rio Hondo. This area will help a little to the city of Rio Hondo, I think the mayor's concern was, excuse me, the city manager's, or commissioner's concern, was that there was going to be a lot of water in the Arroyo that would ultimately back up into the city. I did speak with him. We, Drainage District Three, will be in contact with him and see what we can do from within the Drainage District's end of it, cleaning drains or whitening, maybe even installing a flat gate to keep the water from backing up from the Arroyo back into the city of Rio Hondo. But that's something that we will address outside of this particular projects or these projects. Also, there was a comment made in regards to Primera and Combs. We did meet prior to, while you all were in executive session, and we have agreed to, and some of the projects, like the Southwest Drain, I believe, what, some of the projects or some of the work is being done right now, which will alleviate or leave some money on the table to be able to allocate towards Primera and Combs' concern. I think we were looking at about one and a half million dollars that is needed for Combs and Primera. So we will, within these projects, move money from one to the other to make sure that they are addressed as well. I believe their project consists of connecting into existing drains.
Ms. Lambert?
So that's-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes.
So that will be top priority, Combs and Primera, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
My question is, you're saying that you met with Combs and Primera, and they're saying that you didn't, so what's the deal here?
No, I met with Ken, we met with the Drainage Districts, met, they told us of their concern. No, I have not met with them directly, I do-
I'm sorry, there's nobody, at the time, we have no side part with anybody. I'm the only executive committee for the city of Combs here.
No, sir, and I apologize, we did not meet with you. Drainage Districts met, we heard of your concern this morning when we came in through Ken, and so we, within the Drainage Districts-
I'm sorry, and I don't mean to interrupt, but I haven't spoken with Ken Jones and argued with anything in this project, or any management of this review, that's our fear, because we want to find out what the community's concern is. I've had no conversations with them.
And I apologize, maybe I don't know how the word got to us, the point is, the word did get to us, and we're trying to include you in to these projects.
I guess our concern is, did the proper word get to you, what their actual concerns is compared to what you all are discussing? If there wasn't that communication-
I got this through.
-and maybe there's a breakdown, or maybe there isn't, I don't know.
Well, we have between now and hopefully tomorrow, or Tuesday, to make sure that connection is made. The folks that were here during the executive session, unfortunately, the mayor and Jared were not here at that time, but it was Rio Hondo Commissioners, some professional services folks that they have onboard, working with the city, as well as Primera in Rio Hondo, of that concern, and Combs, as mentioned, is having, you know, the need as well. So the efforts were, and discussions were honorable this morning, the way y'all were in executive session, to try to address all of those needs. So we haven't had a chance, and I didn't realize that the mayor, when we were doing the introductions, that he was able to attend. So we will need to get with them as well, to make sure that-
So we will have followed the meetings with-
Well, we would have to, yes, ma'am.
Because it seems, you know, we've already, Sonia allocated, or trying to allocate some leftover funds to the total of about 1.5 million for Primera and Combs, but we don't know what it's really going to cost, or what their desires are-
That's, that's, that's estimate, I believe, Commissioner, at this point, because this pretty much came to light during the discussions this morning, so we really haven't had a chance to do that. But what would have to be done, if that can be accommodated adequately with those communities, and with the drainage districts coming up with revised dollar amounts for the existing projects, plus for the additional one that we're talking about now, to make sure that the dollars work out.
Well, I was just wondering, I was going to ask the mayor, I think you probably already have in the works, or maybe some type of plans already, that could address the needs of the, for drainage?
Commissioner, and thank you for calling me up here, Judge. The only, our only, our biggest concern is that this Commissioner's Court assured us in the first round that there was projects that couldn't be funded, and that they were going to be funded in the second round. And that's all of a sudden been blown out of the way, and we're ignoring all of that. We don't have a problem building drainage ditches and helping, or the money going to the Drainage District, but how are we going to get the water out of our cities into those drainage ditches? I mean-
Well, that's what I'm referring to. I think the meeting with you and with your representatives is very important, because you might already have something that can be helpful in-
Yeah, and it's also disturbing that we, you know, we've been sitting here, listening to how they talk to us, and how, where they came up to 1.5 million dollars is news to us. You look at that projection up there, and all the money is going to Hidalgo County, and very little, or very few projects to Cameron County, and there is no Combs, or Primera, or Rio Hondo, or Santa Rosa on that list, and-
Can I make a comment? Yeah.
Yeah, we came earlier this morning, Mayor, and we discussed with the districts that hopefully they'll be able to set aside for Primera, Combs, and Santa Rosa to help us with tying into these proposed ditches, so that's-
Well, but, I mean, we haven't, I mean, the allegations, or the assumptions are being made that they, we've had meetings with Combs, and we haven't. We don't, we didn't even know of where they're coming up with 1.5 million dollars.
Do you have an amount, sir?
No, because this is, we're supposed to be setting the method of distribution, and we're already deciding projects to build.
Absolutely, and you're ready to go, sir.
Well, that is not, that is not what we're supposed to be doing. We're supposed to be deciding on the method of distribution.
In order to, excuse me, but in order to decide the method of distribution, you've got to have amounts on projects, at least that's my understanding. How can you distribute if you don't know how much to distribute and where to? And I want to comment one other thing about Cameron and Hidalgo. Mr. Ken Jones did point out that Hidalgo's portion is 25 million, Cameron's is 29 million, so we, as Cameron County, do have a little bit more allocated, if this is agreed upon the Development Council, that Cameron County will receive a little more. I want to apologize, I don't want to, my intent here is to include you, not to leave you out, and that's what we're here for. We made every attempt as the Drainage Districts to include you in here. If one and a half is not going to do, I would like to know how much would, so that we, the others that do have projects on here, can downscale, or try to get funding from within our own Drainage Districts or elsewhere, to be able to accommodate you in here.
But what is the one and a half represented by Combs?
I don't know. Again, this was brought to me, and I tried to-
Well, I think that we, I'd like to stay, let's go back into our swimming lanes and address what this is about, and let me finish the presentation. We're getting about 46% of the total money, and I'm sure in Hidalgo, a little bit less than that. And I think what you were encompassed to do was to come up with a regional, we've been talking about, I think Commissioner Van Bieghers brought up a good point several months ago, when, you know, can we use all the millions, instead of giving them out individually, if I remember right, to come up with a regional plan that addresses everyone, because you wouldn't be able to do it. And of course, as we prefaced the meeting, try to make sure that every community is included as best that you can, you know, they need to be included, but at the same time, that was focused, that this is a regional approach. And, you know, if you look at all the requests, it's like we did the way the first round, we have over 100 million plus of requests, and that would include probably some of their concerns. And we've only got 63 or whatever million dollars to deal with, so if we can, let's get back, and if there's some discussion that needs to be had, you know, y'all can have it, you know, with the mayor and their consultants, you know, either during now or subsequent to this meeting, but for now, I think that, you know, allow them to finish. And I think there's probably some misrepresentations, not your fault, but I think in siding with Combs, I mean, if they're sitting there hearing, we've already had discussions, everyone's onboard, et cetera, and they're sitting there, so, well, no. But I'm glad that Mr. Mendez showed up, because I think what, I think what occurred, there was discussions, because every time I hear, it's usually Primera and Combs, is, you know, because they're so obviously close together, they're, you know, if Primera catches a cold, you know, Combs sneezes, or reverse, but, so they're tied at the hip and they're joined at the hip, so I'm thinking that what Javier and Ken, what they did discuss, somehow included some of the concerns that the city of Combs has. So for now, let's continue to go back, you know, on the presentation, and let's see who they go from there, and then if they, if the mayor, you know, or Ms. Chalkley, come up and further explain, we can do that, but let's try to finish this up, and maybe some of the questions may be answered already.
I think-
Thank you.
I think the main thing, and I applaud the committee that has worked so hard on this, and I think the only thing that was lacking is that, for instance, the mayor from Primera, and maybe the mayor from Santa Rosa and Combs, and maybe because of the timeline, had not, and I don't know who would, should have met with them, but someone should have met with them to explain, this is how your cities will connect into this plan. Because when I was asking questions of Ken and his consultant, that's what I was told, that there was a plan to connect the drainage from these cities into the overall plan. And I think once that's explained to them, which I understand it has not been, I think that'll clarify things, but I'm sorry, Sonia.
No, Ms. Lambert, let me interrupt just for a moment. I would definitely, okay, am behind the regional effort to try and fix this between the three counties. But I think, in speaking to Drainage District Number One last night, one of the directors, and there's only three, he had no idea what I was talking about. And so I think we just need to make a better effort to reach out to everybody, so that everybody is aware of what's going- everybody is aware of what's going on. I spoke to the mayor of South Padre Allen last night also, he had no idea. And so, even though Precinct One and Two may not have been greatly impacted by the storm, we'll never know whether our drainage in these two other areas, and in Precinct Three, may have been, you know, how far they would have been impacted, in other words. And so, I think we just want to make sure that everybody is on board, and is knowledgeable about what's going on, because the way it looks here, everything is happening partially in Precinct Three and Four. And so, and now, they, you know, and they're in Precinct Four also, so I think we just need to reach out more to the different communities, and let them know what we're really trying to do, rather than just come up. I didn't even know there was these projects until it was brought up on Friday evening, you know, did you know? No, I don't know, well, I'm going to send them to you. So, I think that's where the big questions are coming from.
Okay, and we did have a Drainage District One from Brownsville in the committee, ma'am, and I don't know what your communication is with Drainage District One, but they are part of the committee.
Well, my appointment to that...
Did they attend?
Excuse me?
Did any of them attend the meetings?
Yes.
So, they were there?
Yes.
So, then they should have had the information.
Yes.
They should have had the information, I, and I'm just saying it, because this is what I, I spoke to one of the directors, and he said, "I have no idea what you're talking about."
Well, our intent, or our objective, when we formed the committee, Commissioner Benavides, was to make sure we included every drainage district in Cameron County, and that is what we did.
And I guess that was his failure as a manager, to go back to his board and let them know.
I don't, I don't want to point that out, but we were all there on the committee, and we're all given equal representation, and equal voice.
Sure.
We all brought our projects to the table, and then we agreed...
It's kind of like, you can't make him drink, you know, you can't make the horse drink water out of the trough, you can only invite him to the trough, type of thing.
I understand.
Right? I mean, what do you do? They don't go?
No, I think, I think the gentleman did attend, it's just that he didn't pass that information on to the directors, obviously. Well, the important point is that he was there, and he got the information and that voice.
He is, he is part of the committee, yes ma'am.
Okay, well, I just, like I say, I just want everybody to at least have knowledge of what's going on, and if they have any input, to be brought to your attention, and then after that, you know, we can't help everybody...
But there's a criterion there that has to exist before the project can qualify, and that's failure to function. If you didn't have failure to function, you know, you don't qualify on a project, unfortunately. I mean, is that not the case?
And that's an excellent point, there's a lot of us in the drainage district business that have quite a few projects that we could have brought to the table, unfortunately, they don't meet the criteria.
Why not?
We all have the drainage needs, but if they didn't, if they didn't meet that criteria, we could not bring them forth. It could have been that Drainage District One did not meet that criteria, I don't know, and I can't give any explanations or excuses as to why he didn't bring them to you.
I'll ask him.
Yeah, the downside is that, and I guess the downside is that until these systems are tested, to see how they're going to react to certain, you know, flood levels or water levels, you really don't know. So, the, I'm assuming that the criteria that you're using is because these, this infrastructure was tested, and it failed, and that's why they're investing, you know, these monies to try to fix them. And Precincts One and Two, where fortunately, we did not have the, you know, the infrastructure, you know, failures, you know, you can't, I guess, apply for a project unless you know it's going to fail. And we don't know that.
And a lot of these projects are, have been ongoing, or we have plans for, and that's really one of the criterias also, you have to be ready to go on these projects. And with all due respect, we need an amount in order to include them on here, that's the only way to include any amounts, but that's how we addressed, that's how we addressed the whole situation, but...
Shovel-ready projects, I guess what you're talking about.
Exactly, I want to make sure, we don't want to exclude anybody, and we're not here to move anybody aside, we want to include everyone.
Where will you take the money from to accommodate any other, you know, you're going to have to take it from somewhere. So, the way to do it is, hopefully, that the cost estimates of these other projects come in below, you know, what you're budgeting, so you can allocate that money to other projects.
And I know within my own district, and District Three, a couple of these projects are ongoing, so I know that the district has set aside funds to do part of these projects, and we will use our funds to make sure that we leave some funds available for the projects at Combs and Primera, and Combs.
But you need a number, okay. Question. The LMI that you told me all projects have to meet is for all of the amount of money that's non-housing?
Both housing and non-housing, 100% of the...
No, 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 I'm specifically talking, you know, housing is out of my, I don't know what to do with that, you know, because I really don't know. But the non-housing allocation, okay, you're telling me that 100% of the money spent on the non-housing allocation that we're talking about now...
Yes, sir.
...has to meet the 50% LMI.
Or better, yes, sir.
All of the amount.
100% of it.
100% of the dollars has to meet that amount. I thought it was more than 50%.
Well, of the folks receiving benefit has to meet better than 50% LMI, or 51% or better, so, but that's of all the funds...
Could you change how you distribute it, to 51% that meets it, and then the other can go to where the need is greatest?
Not really, because if we have any, if we have any project listed on our priority list, that is less than 50% LMI eligible, the benefits, the state will not approve that project until such time as the state of Texas meets that amount for the 1.7 billion that was addressed to the state of Texas, which potentially means that that project may never get funded. And if we allocated dollars to that, we could potentially lose it to the region, to some other part of state that meets that 50%.
Yeah, but as long as we're meeting the 51%, we should be getting the whole amount.
In our cog, you know? Correct, correct.
I mean, the requirement is if the cog meets the 51% to get the allocation.
I did ask that project to the state, and it's not only project-specific, but regional-specific, so we have, we've got to meet it both ways, Commissioner, unfortunately, but that's, again, getting back to the hand that we were dealt on that.
Because I need 1.5 million to, that we didn't get in the first round, that all went to the small cities, okay? A meeting that I missed, because, you know, I mean, that half million was allocated to all the small cities, and the precincts were left out, and we couldn't fund the damaged areas that we had, because, you know, all that money went to Santa Rosa, Primera, Combs, and, you know...
Well, but they were, they hadn't, they hadn't received it, I mean, they were, they were recipients of money...
Yeah, but it could have been divided by five, and, you know, we have 80,000 people that live outside of city limits, that could have benefited from this same pot of money.
And hence, we're trying to take a little different approach on the round two versus the round one.
Commissioner, with all due respect, I think the county got about $8 million, and we got something like a half million, and that's going to be the, I think, a bunch of funds to be able to...
Well, you know, it went to a lot of different places, many of which were in municipalities in many cases.
Okay, Sonia.
I think, I've already addressed the projects that are listed on here, I just did want to touch on Projects 11 and 12. Rancho Grande South, and Commissioner Gavas, so you mentioned, you asked which projects would be going south. That is this area down here at the very bottom of the map on the white side. These two are listed on there, in case there are some housing funds that can potentially be moved into non-housing, and we'd like to allocate them to that area. That area is an area that Drainage District Three is looking into annexing, it's currently not in any Drainage District, and there are several areas adjacent to the district that I manage, that we are looking into doing that as well, too. The project that was recently awarded here last week, or the week before, for Drainage Study, hopefully will identify a lot of these areas that are not in any Drainage Districts, Drainage District, and hopefully will bring up some projects that can be done, but that is one of those projects that will be draining to the south, Commissioner Gavas, if we are able to annex it and move forward on that project. And then the other one, Project Number 12, is the one at the very, actually, is this the one at the very top?
Very top.
Yeah, Pardon Ranch, I don't know if we have it listed, yeah, okay, Number 12 listed at the very top up here. Again, those are projects that we have, just in case there are some funds available for them.
Sonia, Number Eight, where does the red line start? What is that crossroad?
It goes further south into, let's see, Long Lane, and in that area, Commissioner?
So, it crosses the expressway?
Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir. As a matter of fact, this project Number 11, if we are successful in doing that project, it doesn't show that they're connected on here, but they are...
They will be connected?
They are connected.
They are connected?
They are connected, except the portion on Number 11 is not in the Drainage District, it's just a portion to the west of it, but they are connected. Doing Project Number 11, of course, will leave extra room in the drain ditch for Project Number Five as well, too. Do you have any other questions for me?
Sonia, you are already in the process on Number 11, taking that in, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am, we have to go through the annexation procedures, and that will be hopefully this coming May. The district is in the process also of working on the engineering and design, assuming that it will come into the district in May. Do you need any questions for me?
You can come in.
Before Ken gets away, I know Ken, we talked about the possibility of conferring with the state, and with the federal government, I guess, on the housing funding, in the event that some of the housing, the 104 million dollars, 105 million dollars, is not able to be utilized in our cog area, that that might be moved over to non-housing funding. Is there any hope of that happening? Is it still alive, I guess?
It's still alive, that's why I'm going to be recommending that we include that verbiage in the method of distribution, there's always hope of that, in the no promises, since we have, the actual amount of housing damages is still outstanding for those that would qualify, is still an elusive number for us, but we hope that in that method of distribution process, we can leave enough time, so that at least there would be a milestone point in the next two years, to leave enough time, that if there's dollars not allocated to the housing, we can't, you know, we can verify that everyone's been taken care of, they could possibly be potentially eligible, that we could get approval to move whatever's left over to the non-housing category.
Well, I know that you talked about this as you went through the presentation, but we're talking about what we've been able to identify right now, at about 70 million, and another 50%, another 35 million, would, we've either got to identify it, lose it, or hopefully get it...
If that would be the number, it would be reallocated, so we don't lose it. But again, you know, 70 million is somewhat arbitrary at this point.
Sure.
Yeah, so we're not totally sure what the total dollar amount would be.
Ken, at what point would we know if that money could be allocated, like, to be thrown into this pot of money?
I plan on asking a question, and I've got to be up, a day trip up to Austin with TDRA and TDHCA people, they have asked the executive directors along the Gulf Coast to be there, so I'll have the state folks there. I would like to, we're going to try to start with our board meeting on Tuesday, if everything's approved, I'm asking for board authorization, so we can get started on RFQ process, to try to, you know, save a few months, once we get the grant award from HUD, but I will ask that question. I'd like for there to be at least a year, the milestone point. I don't know if we can get away with that or not, but I think we need to try, because we still need enough time for, to implement whatever drainage projects that that housing money is going to be used for. But we still need to work hard to make sure that we can determine that the housing needs were met, because the state's under a lot of pressure right now, from housing advocates statewide. I think some of the housing advocate groups are going to attend that meeting day after tomorrow, in Austin as well, with complaints, it's already been filed with the state on disenchantment, disappointment, in terms of how some of the housing funds were allocated, not in our region, I think mostly it's issues up in East Texas, and maybe Houston-Galveston area. But I would hope we have at least that much time, Commissioner, but we're trying to do the best we can on that.
Okay. Will you introduce somebody else who's going to speak, Ken?
Alan Moore. Alan Moore, I'm the manager of Drainage District Five, and just want to bring up two points for clarity, it was mentioned once about this money going to the drainage districts. Some of these projects belong to the drainage districts, a lot of them don't, pretty much the 21 and a half million dollars for the Tiaquano-Tam Lane Southwest Drain, less than a million dollars of that is going to be spent in an existing drainage district. It just happened that for the committee to look at drainage issues in the county, the persons that were asked to serve on the committee represented drainage districts. Most of, I'm familiar with that area, because I work adjacent to it, and we deal with that area, but the Tiaquano-Tam Lane area is not in Drainage District Five, but we had an intentional focus at looking at areas that were not served for drainage by anyone else. That's why, you know, those areas were included, and were given a priority, because if they don't receive funding through this type of methodology, they have no other source to obtain it. Even the name for Tiaquano for that project is a misnomer, because yes, the project is intended to begin around Tiaquano Lake.
But it extends.
There were 40 to 50 houses, and one comment that I got was, "We're going to spend this much money to help that few people." Right now, the only outlet for drainage that Santa Rosa has is the floodway, but we all know that a day or two after the hurricane, the ABWC closed the gates to the floodway, and you couldn't get there. The Tam Lane and Adams Gardens area was the same situation. If a relief drain were to be constructed from Tiaquano Lake south to the Arroyo, that would allow an alternate drainage source for the town of Santa Rosa, so they would now have a positive outlet where water could get away from there. There were also other names in the news, like Mariposa Ranch, Hickory Hill, Green Bay South, I think Commissioner Tommey, I know y'all had pumps at all of those for a long time. All of those are also served by this Tiaquano-Tam Lane Southwest Drain area. That's a lot broader area than Tiaquano Lake, it's everything west of Drainage District Five, which were the only drainage district on the north sides of the Arroyo. It also helps the expressway where it was closed. One of the issues that's been brought up is the fact that they're not in a drainage district, Drainage Five is next to it. One of the hindrances on us really looking into annexation has been the cost to improve the infrastructure, to make it feasible for us to take over. There's not a tax base there to justify us going in and building this type of work. Well, if this allocation is made, where there's 21 million dollars in infrastructure improvement for that area, that puts a whole different light on us potentially being able to annex that area. It does become feasible, or possibly, because with this in place, we would predominantly be looking at, you know, just having enough revenue to do the maintenance on it. That's a whole different world, and can lead to a lot more things than what we've discussed.
That was going to be my question, and definitely, we need these projects, but I was concerned, because I know that they're not in a drainage district, and so you're answering my question, you will definitely look at it as being a possibility, because someone has to maintain it.
Right.
And the...
Right.
And the county doesn't have the resources to do that. And the same thing with Runcho and the South. I know, I mean, that would be money well spent, because Sonia's drainage district will be annexing that area, and they will maintain it. So it's critical that we have a drainage district that will be willing to annex the areas that are not in a drainage district that are improved through these projects. You'd have one of the biggest, most likely, and that's why I made the comment early when Sonia was giving her report, that Tiaquano, I mean, don't get misconception here that it's just the Tiaquano area. I know. That project will be, and you've covered it well, it covers a gray big area, and definitely helping Santa Rosa.
Another area, you know, reluctantly, it didn't score enough points to rank higher. It's on the tentative list but not approved, is the Hardin Ranch Drain, which begins just on the east side of Combs and goes all the way to the Arroyo. That is also outside of any drainage district. It's maintained by the Harlan's Irrigation District, and they do what they can, but they have no source of revenue to do improvements on drainage ditches. We're hoping that also, along with, you know, money that gets freed up to do the tie-ins for Combs and Primeta and the other communities, that if there's enough money left over, that's enough for that Number Twelve to replace 19 road crossings from one end of the Hardin Ranch Drain to the other, which gives the eastern side of Combs a drain and a place to get out. Sidebar with that, we're also in the process of obtaining the HMGP grants to cross the expressway, the railroad tracks, Business 77, and get Combs tied in with the main part of our system and get an alternate route for water out of Combs.
Thank you, Alan.
My two cents worth, sorry.
Well, that was a nickel's worth, but thanks. Ken, did you want to introduce Mr. Gudus?
I mean, well, yeah, earlier, Director of our Homeland Security disaster.
Was he going to add anything to the?
I didn't hear anything.
My backup judge. All right. Okay. Any other commentary? Now, at this point, would you like to make just some brief comments? No? Going once, twice? Okay. Ken?
There are two mayors.
You all right?
Mayor, always.
Judge and Commissioners, let me just mention that also part of that main project from south Santa Rosa, that's going to definitely help all the way through south the expressway and Green Bay South and further south. It also helps where the TexDOT built the expressway has caused tremendous flooding on the west side towards Southeast Road. Since the expressway expansion's been completed, this also eliminates that problem as well. I know that y'all traveled to Austin to talk to the TexDOT Commissioner about that, because there are several mobile home parks between the Ferry and Mercedes in Cameron County that are now being flooded that weren't flooded before because of expressway construction. So there's additional benefit.
Thank you, Mayor. Ken?
Mayor?
Do you have a question?
Did the Mayor of Combs have any other comments?
No, he said he passed.
Okay.
Judges, in summary, and Commissioners, just want to thank y'all for your time, that y'all invested in this topic this morning. We really appreciate the opportunity to share with each of you what we have, and again, to try to get the word out in the short time that we have, best case. So we really appreciate being added to the agenda this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. And thank Sonia and all the committee members that helped put this together, and I encourage you to continue your dialogue with Combs or Primeta and all the smaller communities that need your assistance as well. Okay? Do I have a motion to acknowledge the presentation?
Sure.
By Commissioner Wood, sent by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Thank y'all. For those who choose to leave, mayors attend to leave.
Thank you.
That was.
Thank you for your work.
You should let us know how the meeting goes in Austin.
I have in six A, budget amendments, lineups and transfers, and our salary schedules.
Judge, Commissioners, you have the budget amendment in front of you. Page one, or just general budget amendments that are being done to cover operations. Page two of the budget amendment is reflections that need to be done based on continuous grant funding, summary increases, one is a slight, another one is a decrease, and there's no complaints with grant guidelines.
Move by Commissioner Gatsa. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Damaio, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item B, approval of claims.
I have one, number 2300, for one, 32303, for your approval. I also have an ICH that is issued to Kim Mark for $4,678.80 for your approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve claims?
Show move.
Move by Commissioner Gatsa. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Wood. Any discussion? Please note my abstention on the update that's not provided. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Approval of minutes for October the 29th, 2009, regular meeting, November 12th, November 20th, both special meetings. Have the court members had the opportunity to review the minutes, are they ready for their approval? Move by Commissioner Damaio. Do I have a second? By Commissioner Gatsa, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item D, consideration possible appointment of a seven board of directors to the Cameron County Child Welfare Board. I want to bring this item back, but just to brief, we've had at least maybe two meetings with some of the Child Welfare Board members. If y'all recall, this came up, I think, at the end of 2006, and we decided whether we're going to continue with that board or not. But we've talked about, and Bill, if I missed something, let me know. It's a, made up of 15 board members?
It can be from seven to 15.
Yeah, but right now, there's 15.
I don't know exactly how many.
Well, there's slots for 15, and they've been struggling just trying to get a quorum. In discussions, they were in agreement, they being Robert M. de Mallor, and I forgot the other people that were with us, to bring it down to seven board members. They're okay with that, easier to get a quorum, a little more manageable. There's three members that are already there that are willing to continue serving, and I ask that each member of the court appoint one person to complete the seven. And will I be bringing this back at the last meeting of the year or the first meeting in January, depending on whether you guys have a man ready to go? Okay?
Judge, how often do they meet?
You know, I think they were, well, maybe they weren't meeting. I mean, it's been in somewhat disarray for quite some time. I've met with them several times, trying to get some information out of them. Hopefully, once we get the board members down to seven, and it's an official board, doesn't require any county funding, I'm hoping that they meet at least every three months. But that'll be up to them, for them to elect their board chair, and so on and so forth. How often were they meeting now? They weren't meeting at all.
I think they were meeting at all.
Yeah, so, and they want to formalize it, and so we can certainly give them some guidance, but at the end of the day, it'll be that board's decisions to how often they meet. I don't think they meet monthly. I don't think they want to meet monthly.
Because, you know, in asking someone, that's going to be one of the questions.
Yeah, if y'all could just do that.
They're meeting in the evening.
Yeah, that would be up to them to decide if you want. I'll get a little bit more information from Miss M. de Mallor, and maybe then have her come in at the next meeting to give a brief presentation, and then maybe have her do that, come in at the last meeting of December, and then hopefully, then by the first meeting in January, each of y'all can have a man to present. Okay?
That would be helpful.
Do I hear a motion just to acknowledge? So, by Commissioner Wood, sent by Commissioner Gatsa, any discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item E, consideration authorization of a public hearing to discuss the reallocation of the 2007 SEAP funds towards a new project, the Beach Erosion Response Project on South Padre Island. Do I hear a motion to open public hearing?
Show move.
By Commissioner Gatsa and by Commissioner Damaio, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Or in a public hearing. How about?
Yes, Judge, Commissioners, we are required, we do any amendments to our plan, our SEAP plans, of course, to gather public input, either for or against the amendments or the changes. And what we would like to do, of course, it's the next item, as y'all recall, a few weeks ago, y'all showed interest in supporting the Beach Erosion Response Project on South Padre Island. The town of Padre Island applied for a project under KEPRA, and the project coordinator is looking for participants in trying to help offset the match. I think they're looking for $25,000 from the county. So what I did was, we looked at the SEAP. There's one project that's not going to be pursued, which is the one from the, somebody to Puertesville Navigation District. It's a state water restoration project. That's Bob Cornilson, and he's already responded to us, saying that, you know, they do not want to pursue the project. We met with the Coastal Task Force last week, and the Coastal Task Force voted to reallocate those funds towards this project here. That's all I got.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody that's going to speak against? Or for? Well, let's go with the against. The fours are easy. And no one here against it. I gather you're for it.
I know it's not going to speak, but I'm going to.
Okay.
I was going to be the stakeholder, the city manager, but fortunately, she said that they were tight, so I'll just hand it out.
All right.
And then I also have a letter of support from Elena Bagley.
Thank you.
One of the city council members.
So I would imagine that they're in support of it, right?
Yes.
Of course.
Of course.
All right. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing? Move by Commissioner Gatsa, sent by Commissioner Wood. In favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item F, consideration authorization to submit a grant application to the Texas General Land Office to reallocate 2007 SEAP funds towards the Beach Erosion Response Project on SPI. Do I hear a motion to authorize a submission?
Show move.
By Commissioner Wood. Do I have a second? By Commissioner Damaio, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item G, consideration approval of conceptual park plan and budget for Phase One of El Ranchito Committee Park. Javier?
Yes, I emailed the project. In the back, I do have the conceptual.
Thank you.
I thought I had this question ready for you. Submitted the agenda. The architect and, we were working on it, and we wanted to meet with Commissioner Damaio, make sure that we had all the components in the project identified. But what we're looking at here is for Phase One, we want to apply to Texas Parks and Wildlife for a grant for $500,000, and what that's going to include is a baseball field, a soccer field, a basketball court, a pavilion, a restroom, and of course, the parking lot and all the walking trail, and so on, and everything else that comes with it, landscaping, irrigation, electrical, water, sewer. But what we did was, at the very bottom, the second page, our total budget is $1,000,799, or $1,007,999. What we did was, we showed in-kind costs in there. So we're trying to do is, we're trying to, we're trying to show all the components that we could, that we're eligible for, for reimbursement. We're trying to show the in-kind cost, so that that'll be our match, so we won't be, we won't be out the additional money through costs. So we think it's a good budget. We've worked with, we use this, we base this estimate off of the last three projects that we've done, which is Laureles, El Ranchito Park that's there now with the pool. Oh, we're still going to.
You're still going to have that?
Still going to have it, yes.
But you can't build adjacent, though, to it, Ken?
No.
There's no.
Yeah, we're built out of that property.
We really tried, Judge, to see if there was anything that, and it was just an impossible situation.
There's not enough land there, adjacent to that pool?
Well, the only area that was there, and it was enough land, was extremely low. I mean, it would have taken all kinds of money, and even then, I don't think that we would have been able to suffice the need, so that it would, so that it wouldn't flood.
Any interest, though, in where the pool is now? I mean, I know, you know, a family that lives there, but is there any interest from them? Maybe, is there enough acreage around that? How many acres do you need? About 20? 15?
This one here's 20 acres, and of course, we're not building the whole 20 acres.
Right, but is there any land that's adjacent? I mean, I know that we can't.
That's exactly what I'm telling you. We took years. I mean, this has been going on for seven years. The land around it was, it was either, it would flood, and there was no way that we could put in enough dirt to where it would, we tried all around the area, and then on one side.
Maybe sell it on the other side of the wall? Yeah. We did.
The other side. It was up to the other side of the wall.
We did speak to the landowners to the south, I believe, towards the river. They weren't interested in selling to us at all, and that's the property Commissioner's talking about. It's a lower area.
Even with the wall?
It could have been an amenity to the park, you know, we could have dredged it and made it a pond, but, and then we lived right next door to that. I can't remember that it was a family by Nemo Rodriguez. They did not want to sell to us either. We had one interested.
Two of them did not want to sell.
Right. We had one interested party, but it was several hundred feet away from the park, so it wasn't connected.
Well, what was in between the 100 feet? Another property owner?
Well, what it was, it was, right, this property that I was talking about, it's a low area, and then you'd have to drive down that Caliche Road that's next to us, all the way to the back, and he was interested in selling us a low area of his property.
But it was just too low. It was, it would have caused a problem.
So how much money is coming from the bond issue on this one?
$500,000.
From the bond?
Yes, sir.
That's still there allocated?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Javier, then we're getting 500 from the bonds. We're going to apply for 500 from Texas Parks and Wildlife.
Yes, sir.
And we're committing almost $500,000, $455,000 for in-kind. Does that make up of the 1.45 million?
Right. And what I was making a point of earlier is that some of the components that we're not eligible for reimbursement is like the parking lot, the restrooms, and of course, some of the administrative costs, electricity and stuff like that, so we have to absorb that into our, into the components of the project in order to get that reimbursed.
What's our plan if we don't get the money from Texas Parks and Wildlife?
She's going to have to retry.
Okay.
I mean, there's no way.
The next cycle.
Next cycle, okay.
And that's what we're trying to do right now, Commissioner Wood, is that we want to submit it in January, January 31st, to see.
That's their cycles, or cycles of years.
Right. And if it doesn't, if it's not successful, we submit it in July.
Okay. Good.
We'll try.
Yes.
Hopefully, the first time.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the conceptual plan by Commissioner Damaio? Second by Commissioner Gatsa. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item H, FEMA reimbursements. Judge, Commissioners, last week, I did have the opportunity to meet with a gentleman from the Texas Division of Emergency Management, the name of Emmett Lopez. He came, we had a pretty productive and lengthy meeting, and actually, I was able to walk him around and present him to a few people that were available at that time. He did identify some discrepancies in our audit documentation that has been submitted to them. We were able to correct them. He said he would take that back to Austin, submit those corrections, and they were actually just clarifications, they weren't really corrections. And once those are submitted, and we should have an audit team, he wasn't able to give us a specific timeframe, but he has been appointed, I guess, by Chief Colley, to directly handle Cameron County and Hurricane Dolly. So we know we're making at least some progress in the right direction. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge?
Show move.
By Commissioner Wood, sent by Commissioner Gatsa. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Last item, consideration possible action on selection of the recommended appointees to the Cameron County Coastal Task Force. List has been provided.
Judge, those people were already on there. The only ones that were not were Donna Imar and Mayor Leon Deason. They're new to the list, okay? Donna went in for Hector.
The only ones that were not were Donna Imar and Mayor Leon Dyson. They're new to the list, okay? Donna went in for Hector Lopez.
Okay.
Used to be with...
The Port.
The Port. And we have a new mayor in Beview as of last year, so he goes in as the new designate. The other ones are all the same.
Do I hear motion to approve this by Commissioner Tamayo? Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Before we adjourn, we do have a meeting on Thursday at 5:00. Short agenda, proof payroll, some other, you know, incidentals. That's it? Do I hear motion to adjourn?
And then next, and then next week?
Do we have something next week?
Do we have a meeting next week?
John.
Probably not, not till the following. And we'll try to have that meeting on Tuesday.
I might be out.
But the following is...
It's Tuesday, Thursday. Are we going to have a quorum?
What Thursday?
This coming Thursday.
We should, I'm here.
I'm going to be here.
Yeah. It's just to prove payroll and some other things. Do I hear motion to adjourn?
Yes.
By Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries.